Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting of the Yukon City Council for March the 19th, 2013 to order. If you would rise for the invocation by Debbie Powell of the First Church, First Christian Church, excuse me, and remain standing for the flag salute.
Let us pray. God of all the nations, you have called all people to lives of service and justice. You have called all people to lives of peace and wholeness in community. Bless all those who gather now in this place to answer your call. As they prepare for the meaningful work before them this day, we are grateful. Grateful for their gifts of discernment, grateful for their gifts of wisdom, grateful for their gifts of vision for our community. Grant to all who gather here the gift of patience and cooperation. Grant to those who ponder differing views the gift of clarity of thought. Grant to all the courage for truth. We ask that all eyes be constantly open to one another and the issues that city government can and should solve or improve. Even as our heads are bowed, we continue to look up at what can be accomplished by applying the gifts and talents and experience you have given all in this room. As we work together on behalf of all who live in this city, may we gain strength and sustenance from one another through reason and compassion and faith. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Here.
Smith?
Gerba?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Opitz?
Here.
At this time, if Mr. Councilman McCarron would meet me around front for a presentation.
Jory and Grant, do you want to come up and join me up here with your mom, Shelley? The Neighborhood Watch Association for Monaleese every year has an opportunity to nominate one of their children underneath the age of sixteen, or in this case, it's actually three. One of the children is away today. He's off on a trip doing some good work somewhere else as well. And so, Mom and Jory and Blake, or Blake and Grant, I missed, I didn't start up Jory here. Okay. And anyway, every year, they pick someone out, and in this particular case, these two young men, along with their brother, went over to another individual's home who was ill, unable to take care of their home and helping with weeding their gardens and cleaning out the front of their home, also taking out the garbage and other chores, and for some of our folks, it gets to be kind of difficult. And so, I think it's a very special time for us to invest in our youth and the young people, and when they do special things, to recognize them as we're doing here today. So, anyway, Grant, we have a certificate here for you, okay? And we also have a shirt for you. That's the smallest one on top there, I think. And then, the lake. John's better at this than I think. And a certificate for him, and he will be the largest one there. And then, of course, number three is being represented as Jory, the pseudonym of Shelley. And she is here for her oldest son, who is, as I indicated, off to the mission work. So, it's really pretty important that we recognize things like this in our community. And it just goes back to what I say almost every time, and I concur with Rick most of the time, that Yukon is a wonderful place to be, and certainly engaging our young people is an important thing. So, once again, let's give them all a big round of applause.
At this time, we have the visitor's section of the meeting. This is the opportunity, if someone would like to address the council about a non-agenda item, if they would approach the podium, announce their name and their address, please.
Good evening. It's Rick Kachini at 1140 Landmark Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma. All right. Well, I got roped into this. I had given some items to the Forty-Fifth Infantry Division Museum and some things to the Fort Reno Museum, and it dawned on many of the veterans and residents of this town that we ought to have kept that stuff and put it in our own museum. Unfortunately, we don't have a museum. So, I've been asked to see if I could start one up, and I've given you a piece of paper where I think I'm going with it. So, it's just a question of whether or not you folks feel that we could use a museum here to maintain a continuity with other towns, as you saw, the Forty-Fifth being Oklahoma City and the one at Fort Reno, Fort Reno, and have something for our veterans. We've got quite a few veterans. I'm sure you've been watching our growth here in Yukon. So, apparently, we're growing leaps and bounds, and naturally, with the amount of things going on overseas, we have a lot of veterans. And we were talking about the Yukon Veterans Memorial Museum. It was to house all veterans from all services. And so, that was the idea. So, I'm hoping you folks think the same of it, and just let me know if I can continue to go. All right?
Well-
Any questions?
Grayson, I don't know-
Well, first of all, we, he presented, we really can't discuss.
I understand, but he said let him know. So, I mean, I want to make sure that that request-
Yeah, I'm going to continue to move until I'm told to stop.
That's exactly what you need to do.
Okay.
Okay. And I was gonna say, can he speak with you?
Absolutely. And in fact, if you look on the second page of the document, the third line down, the name Lou Sims, which is Louis Sims, is a close personal friend of mine, and I put Rick in touch with him, and-
Okay. Well, and that's what I was, I didn't mean to volunteer you, Grayson, but that's why I said Grayson. I was gonna say, perhaps it could be-
He's a good man.
Be a point of contact to start, and then if you need additional help from the council, if you could-
Yes, sir. I just, I think it would be a great thing for our community.
Yes, sir. I don't disagree a bit. And I appreciate anyone that's willing to help and improve the community, and I certainly think that you have a good idea, so-
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming tonight.
John Canupel, 410 Old Yukon, Oklahoma. The Yukon Historical Society would like to invite everybody in town to come to Ernie Burossick's Farm Museum at Third and South North Cedar at 1:00, March the 23rd. And it's a celebration of Yukon's 122nd birthday. Now, we started celebrating the birthday, I think, in 1993, and we hope that it'll continue on up to the 200th anniversary, which is just around the corner.
Do you plan to host that?
Well, I don't know. I was only eight years old in 1891, so I'm not sure I'll make it. Okay, one other thing. The Yukon Historical Society, we started the Veteran Memorial in 1995. We keep track of all the veterans. We've got media forums. We add names to the Veteran Memorial every six months, and we have a ceremony, and we're aware of the veterans, and we keep track of all of them.
Well, maybe you all can talk.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, John. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Thank you, John.
All right. At this time, we'll recess as the Yukon City Council reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A on the YMA consent docket, this item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of March the 5th, 2013, and B, the payment of material claims in the amount of $182,837.75. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gerba?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
At this time, we adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. The first item on the agenda is item number one, and that's the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of March the 5th, 2013; B, the payment of material claims in the amount of $291,660.05; C, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; D, denial of claim number 33167-TW from Naomi Moyer, as recommended by the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group; and E, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for April the 2nd, 2013, 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, would you like to set aside item D for discussion, please?
Yes, sir. Do I have a motion on the remaining items, A, B, C, and E?
Motion to approve A, B, C, and E.
Second.
Any discussion on items A, B, C, and E? Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Matter passes. Councilman McCarron?
Well, we received a claim from the, a claim regard to a, an accident, actually, that happened where a weed eater threw a rock into someone's car and broke the window, and the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group said that because of our current law structure and everything, our current ordinance structure, that at some point, it probably shouldn't be paid. And I'm not sure that if we've done damage to someone, that we might want to revisit that and take a look at it and see if it's, you know, discuss it amongst all of us and see if that's something that we should look at.
Okay. So, you're, are you asking the item be pulled and then instruct the city manager to reimburse for damage?
In this case, I, you know, I think that we might want to look at reimbursement for damage because it is something that occurred.
Is that your motion, sir?
I'll be happy to make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Opitz?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Okay. Item two is reports of boards, commissions, and city officials.
None this evening.
Thank you, sir. Item three is consider approving resolution number 2013-4, 04, excuse me, a resolution declaring and setting fees relating to the City of Yukon Code of Ordinances, Section 4.03, 18-4, 18-30, 18-33, 18-54, 18-56, 18-82, 18-110, 18-111, 18-137, 22-37, 22-38, 22-105, 66.5, 94.11, 93-34, 102-62, 114-31, 605.7, 701.5, 803, 901.2. All fees relating to community development and establishing fees for zoning clearance letters, maps production, and mailing, and providing for an effective date. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I just have one item that I just like to discuss. I just think it would be beneficial to maybe say a few things on how we arrived at this new schedule.
I will. As I wrote you in my memo, I asked Mitch and his staff to review all the metro area for the fees concerning community development, basically permitting and those kinds of things. Mitch spent several months, he and his staff, gathering that data, putting it into a form that could be at least somewhat understood by everybody, because everybody wants to differentiate themselves in fees some way or another. I further instructed Mitch then to prepare a document, a resolution for your consideration, that took the average of every fee across the entire metro area, reduce it by $1, and that is how we set the fee schedule. So, it's $1 less than the average on every fee.
Thank you, Grayson.
Mr. Opitz?
Nothing.
Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Next item is four, and that's consider approving a final plat, being a replat of Lot 1 and Common Area B of Block 17, stolen mill Phase 4, as recommended by the planning commission. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Opitz?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. Next item is five, and that's consider ratifying an expenditure of funds to repair 600 feet of 16-inch water line between well number eight and well number nine at the cost of $51,403.80, as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gerba?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
The next item is six, and that's consider approving a purchase in the amount of $59,900 for a spray injection machine from Joe Co. Equipment, as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
The next item is seven, and that's the city manager report information, items only.
For the third month in a row, I'm disappointed. We actually showed a decrease in our sales tax for the month by $1,007. While that is not a significant amount of money, it is continuing a disturbing trend. Michael Momfelt and I are working with others across the state because what we're seeing really doesn't hold true to form, and we think that we need some more explanation about what's going on. But what it does is that entering our budget season as we are, Michael and I are scrambling to again come up with a number for a budget increase for the next year that we think is attainable, is conservative, but is attainable. And without further explanation from the Oklahoma Tax Commission, it is difficult for me to come before you at budget hearings recommending a larger increase than about 3.5% or 4%, if that. So, as we move forward, we will continue to keep a close eye on the sales tax collections and continue to work with the Oklahoma Tax Commission and other cities and towns from across the state for a better understanding of what's going on. Commercial dumpster rollout. We received our front loader, commercial truck. It, I'll, I don't know, I have this, and I'll be happy for you to look at the picture. It really is a nice-looking truck. It's clean. And we've begun the dumpster, the commercial dumpster rollout so that we can put that operation into service. The, I believe that it is going to be a very efficient operation, and while the rollout is going on, training is going on of the drivers. So, we look within the next week to have all the dumpsters out that we currently have on site and to start our new improved commercial operation. We do anticipate that the, oh, that the remaining three trucks are en route to Oklahoma right now. We anticipate that they will be delivered in the next week or so, and that after training has occurred on those, we will put those into service as well. That is very important because as we move forward with all of the steps to being a full-service sanitation operation within our community, we really need to get that operating because that's the core business that we provide. Also, I wanted to make everybody aware that we are putting down new flooring in the library, replacing the old linoleum flooring that was there, and we will be closed on Wednesday, March the 27th, and Thursday, March 28th. We are already scheduled to be closed on the 29th, Good Friday, and that, those three days, along with the weekend, will give us plenty of time to get the flooring installed and to have it prepared and ready to go for the next Monday. The final thing that I wanted to, I'll call your attention to progress report from Triad concerning the projects that we've undertaken, particularly on streets. Those things that don't have anything written out on the status line, that column, those are coming up next. So, we're moving forward with all of those. Also, this last week, Councilman McCarron and I traveled to Washington, DC to be a part of the Congressional Cities Conference, put on by the National League of Cities. We attended several meetings on Monday. We learned a lot about water.
Our lack thereof.
Our lack thereof. And, but they were beneficial meetings. On Tuesday, Tuesday morning, we met with Representative Tom Cole at his office. Had a good reception there. I was very pleased with, even though he's not particularly our representative right here, he was very warm and receptive and listened to our concerns, particularly about Corps of Engineers. And in Congress today, all of them are wanting to talk about sequestration. They're wanting to talk about gun control, and they're wanting to talk about immigration. But we highlighted a few other items of particular local interest to us as we went through that. Right after that meeting, we went over and visited with Senator Inhofe. He was not in his office. He was actually sitting in a Armed Services Committee meeting, and he asked that we come to the ante room just behind the conference room where they were meeting. We met with him there. Again, as always, Senator Inhofe is very receptive. He listened, and in fact, already, we have sent a letter to the Corps under his signature concerning our water tower and water line and moving forward on that particular project. And then later that afternoon, we went to see Congressman Lucas. He acknowledged that Yukon is his fastest-growing community and the fastest-growing county in his entire region. His region, by the way, covers well over 2/3 of the entire land surface of the state of Oklahoma, and Congressman was very warm to us. We did not get to see Senator Coburn while we were there, but all three of the others, we got to see. I felt that the meetings were well worth the trip and kept our local interest at the forefront of their thought process. I think it's very important that we went and see them. So, with that, Mayor, I'm done for the evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Questions?
Mayor, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
And Grayson, I know that I mentioned this to you, but the impact of the I-40, actually, that's going to be started next month, take 13 months to get through, and they're going to be interrupting our exits and some different things. Is there any study or impact study of how it's going to affect us as far as?
Not the economics.
Okay.
There are environmental studies that relate to other things. They have also done some studies concerning what happens after the road construction is done and completed in the 13 months. But to my knowledge, there are no economic impact studies that have been completed.
Will there be an economic impact during that 13 months that we should adjust for in our budget?
Probably. We're certainly looking at that. Really and truly, the major portion of that should be finished by the time our major Christmas shopping season, it's the bridges over Garth Brooks. That's the big deal. And once that is, those are first up, to accomplish those first up, and once those are done, that intersection should be pretty well back to order by Christmas.
Good. They don't ever do that?
The economic impact studies and other projects, will we could see?
I have never seen one out of the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, an economic impact study.
Because it has to negatively impact.
It has to, well, I mean, even within our own community.
Or even a study, but statistics. I mean, is there a comparison?
I might be able to, I doubt that I would be able to pull something from transportation. I might be able to pull something from other cities that have experienced similar type things. But really and truly, we're going to have one way to get from the north side to the south side.
Well, I'm just, I think Mr. Opitz brings up a good point, whether that will, will people drive past us rather than to get off the highway and?
Really and truly, that probably will not be as big an impact at that point as it would be our own shoppers having to only one way to go across town, rather than just head east where there's no construction going on. So, people coming from the west, they're going to shop where they want to anyway.
Sure.
Now, Grayson, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't they also agree that there was going to be one lane of traffic going in either direction 100% of the time?
100% of the time, and the exits will be open.
Okay. That's important, yeah.
Anything else? Next item is item eight, new business. With none this evening, we'll proceed to nine. Council discussion. Councilman McCarron?
I too enjoyed the National Cities Conference, as did Grayson. We did have an opportunity to go up and be duly impressed by, or unimpressed, I guess, in some cases, about what's going on in the federal government right now. And, but we did have an opportunity, and as he indicated, we're warmly received everywhere that we went. They are very interested in the same kinds of things that we are. I think they also have a reasonable sense of fact that water is going to be a major commodity issue to all of us, and consequently, I think they, for us being up front with them, particularly Councilman Senator Inhofe, and talking to his chief of staff, I think it's, was a very interesting, eye-opening thing for me. I enjoyed the time that I spent there and certainly learned a great deal. Very much that I was surprised by the fact that they had enormous- deal. Very much that I was surprised by the fact that they had an enormous number of kids there that participate in city government in various places. And they took a lot of them there to the conference. And very much what our mayor has tried to do here is with Yukon Coalition and, and the little things that, that go along with that of introducing children to good government, I think is, it was, to me, at least a little bit refreshing from some of the rhetoric that all of us have been listening to for quite a while. So I really felt like that it was a very beneficial thing for me. It did point out to me, there's a whole lot of folks in this country that don't see eye to eye with, with Yukon, Oklahoma. But I did enjoy the time that we spent there, and I think it was a time well spent as well. I did want to thank our, our kids that came up today, that were recognized by the Von Am East Neighborhood Watch. Certainly, the, the boys that came up, Blake and, and Grant, were both just very ni, very nice young men. Credit to their mother, Shelley, who's here with them. I also want to just thank, so that everybody knows that the Von Am East Neighborhood Watch is one of many that we have. There's Frank Vassalero and Cheryl Drebek run that, Take Your One. And they spend a lot of time in their neighborhoods, keeping them to be nice places. And, and I think that's a, another really nice thing about Yukon. So with that, I also just, just a shout out to Arnold and Robbie. Robbie's not here tonight, but I appreciated the information that we got back on all road projects and the current status and where they're at. I don't think there's probably a week or two that goes by that somebody doesn't ask me about, about roads and streets in Ward Four particularly. But they've been doing a really good job of keeping us informed and letting us know what's going on. So I appreciate that, and I don't mind saying so publicly. So with that, Mayor, that's all for me. Thank you.
Mr. Gerba?
I just got one quick thing. Spent yesterday, after I got off work, scalping my yard, like so many other people out there. And one thing I noticed, a lot of my neighbors have huge piles of bags with all this stuff in it. Well, one thing that I did, and everybody can do, is you can mulch that. If you've got a mulcher blade on your, on your mower, mulch it. It just saves gobs of space in our landfills that you're just throwing all those clippings away. And the other point I wanted to make, too, is now as we're kind of going into the lawn care maintenance season, is we're still under water restrictions. So be very prudent with your use of water. I mean, if this is one, going to be one of those really bad summers, it may be the summer where we're going to see a lot of brown grass. But we got to do what you got to do for the good of everybody. So just, everybody remain cognizant of that. Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Opitz?
Don't you love Yukon? I mean, what's not to love here? I want to compliment our police department tonight. I don't, John Corn, I have no idea what you did exactly. But during the peak times of the things going on, I have even noticed the difference in the presence of our police. It's amazing. Because I, I actually noticed it, and it's making a huge difference. I really like that. I also want to compliment a guy that's here tonight, and his name's John Nail. John, you've been a great asset to this community and to this city. You've done a great job in your building. I love your developments. I love what you're doing. But I also love the thing you're doing over there on Yukon Parkway. It's going to be a great asset, not only to you, John, but to this city. And we appreciate you. And we thank you for that.
Joe, Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Always appreciate your words. So. And I agree, it is a great place. And a couple of things that I want to talk about, I wasn't here last time because it was my little boy's birthday. But we had gone down, Grayson and Tammy and Dana and Mitchell, we had gone down to the Mayor's Healthy Cities and participated in that. And we're continuing to be involved and, and make our community healthy. So I want you to know that, first of all, I appreciate you all for helping, continuing to push forward, making our parks more accessible, applying for grants and doing things like that. Jan's here tonight. Thank you, guys. Everyone, Jeff, everyone that works on that stuff, thank you so much. I, I just, I think it's so important for us to be healthy. And it's, it's springtime. It's time to get out, start moving, start walking, find yourself some, some healthy activity, get involved in, and start moving. It, it makes you more healthy to make you feel better. And that night on March the ninth, little John, my son and I went over and helped the Yukon Coalition pick up about three thousand cigarette butts over around Boot Hill. And I had no clue that there was three thousand cigarette, about twelve of us, I don't remember. There wasn't a big group, but a nice group of kids picked up three thousand. So these people are walking along, smoking and chunking those in our park. That's mind-boggling to me. So I would ask you, if you smoke, be conscientious. If that's something that you want to do, that's fine. But, but put it away. Don't smoke around parks. Remember that we're smoke-free here in our community. And then in that vein, remember, this is your town. Paint whoever's name you want to on the water town, water tower, but this is our hometown. It's your hometown. If you walk by a piece of trash, bend over and pick it up. In the parking lots at Walmart, if you're walking in and you see something laying there, pick it up. You know, we were out there picking up those cigarette butts, and we walk by stuff laying on the, on the ground all the time. It's your town. The city has gone to great efforts. We've got nice shiny new water towers, nice equipment, nice vehicles. We're even trying to make our street signs all match, aren't we, Grayson?
Yes, we are.
Turning them black. It's, it's an image. But it's your town. Be part of that. Please bend over, pick up a piece of trash, throw it away. That's all I have. Nothing else before the council? Stand adjourned.